Get ready to climb back on the land. Come on, man, shake the dust off the pool. Don't yawn and prolong what you got to do. And if you've been going through any negative phase, well, here's your opportunity for turning the page. Today's a new chapter. Write your line, make it end with the win. Give it all you got. But first, you gotta rise with alert and a laugh. Pick the dirt from your eyes and work for the prize. It is done, because we ain't even trying to lose. Let's go, man, double hit snooze. It's time to wake up. 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 Tick tock, tick tock, come on. Tick tock, tick, let's go. Tick tock, tick, come on. Tick tock, tick. You can't wait around for someone to prove it. Now is the moment to begin your renewal, man. Feel alive with the vibe energized of the folks who you're coming by the white in your eyes. Hey, another day might waste away. Come on, let's get it going, don't make delays. So bring me along and lift your arm high like Georgia. We'll get a piece of the pie. Begin it with the stack. You'll get in it in the sack. Get it running like you never did it when you overslept. So write this minute. Get right with it. What time is it? It's time to wake up.
Good morning, Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, March 26th. This morning, our invocation will be delivered by Reverend Holt, pastor of Church of the Highlands, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilor Crystal Smitherman. If you're willing and able, please rise.
Good morning. As mentioned, my name is Charlton from Church of the Highlands. It's always an honor to come alongside of our city, pray for our city, and get our city council meeting rolling for this morning. Let's pray. God, we love you, Lord. Today, we just asked you to come into this place. This is your meeting today, in Jesus' name, Lord. We pray for our city, our great city of Birmingham, Alabama. We pray that we will be a city on a hill, Lord. So we pray that you do something supernatural through our city, Lord. We pray that our business and our economy will continue to thrive. We pray protection over our city, in Jesus' name. We pray that we send you roaring angels to protect our children, protect our families, Lord God. We pray for this meeting, our staff, our city officials. We pray that you give them wisdom that surpasses their own understanding, Lord God. We pray that every direction that we go, every legislation, Lord God, every law that we pass, be infused by you. We pray that we get out of the way of Birmingham, Alabama, and that you will lead our city to the place that you called us to be. We know that the weapons will form, they will prosper, in Jesus' name, against our city. And so we pray that as the years to come, that people will notice that something is different about Birmingham, Alabama, and that's because we put you first. And so, God, we pray that you be with us, continue to lead us, continue to guide us into your good and perfect will for our city. In Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk. Could we please have the roll call?
Morning, sir. Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smitherman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Good morning. Council President Protem Alexander. Good morning. Council President O'Quinn.
President. Thank you. The minutes of the November 7th, 2023, through March 19th, 2024, meetings are not ready. At this time, we'll have communications from the mayor's office. Chief?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. President. Madam Protem, good morning to the members of the council, members of the public, all those under the sound of my voice. I have a very brief mayor's report for you today. Good Friday holiday and household garbage pickup. City of Birmingham offices will be closed Friday, March 29th, in observance of Good Friday. Residents who typically receive household garbage pickups on Friday will be serviced this week on Wednesday, March 27th. Bulk trash and brush will not be picked up on Friday. No other collection days will be interrupted. So again, those who normally receive pickup on Friday, you'll be serviced on Wednesday, tomorrow. And then bulk trash and brush will not be picked up on Friday, but all of the other collection days will not be interrupted. HBCU Spring Coming. March 28th through 30th marks the third year of HBCU Spring Coming. The annual event will feature a free HBCU panel and a comedy show on Thursday. Sips and Sounds hosted by Q Parker of 112 on Friday, and fun for children and adults at Lynn Park on Saturday. The event will also feature a performance by Young Jacques. Details and registration can be found at hbcuspringcoming.com. Kids and Jobs applications are opening very soon. The Department of Youth Services and FOT6 are once again hosting the annual youth summer employment program, Kids and Jobs. Kids and Jobs was found to expose Birmingham youth ages 14 to 24 to the workforce and to cultivate the professional growth required for students to become active members of Birmingham's business community. The application period is now open through April the 12th. Applications can be found on bhameuthfirst.org. Also, for businesses looking to host Kids and Jobs employees this summer, please visit the website to complete a program partner application. And for more info, you can call the DYS office at 205-320-0879. Mr. President, Madam Protem, members of the council, that concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you. All right. At this time, without objection, we'll suspend the rules for a presentation from Councilor Smitherman.
Good morning, councilmembers. So I'll be brief, because I'm going to let the kids talk and coach talk, but I want you to see these future Olympic track athletes, because we're going to speak that into existence. But these are 13 Alabama Heat track athletes came to the indoor nationals a couple of months ago, and eight out of 13 were named All-Americans in the 200-meter dash. So these are our winners behind us. And so they practice at least four days a week, which I'm really impressed, because I work out five days a week, and that's hard for me. But it takes hard work, discipline, dedication to do what you all have done. And so I really want to say I am so happy and proud of you all for what you have done. And Coach, do you want to say a few words? And then if y'all can introduce yourselves as well.
Tell who you are.
I'm Blackseka Davis.
Morning, Rip.
Robert Currie.
Jay King.
Jomaya Smith.
Violet Lacey.
Caleb Newton.
Gideon Newton.
Anthony and Yapo.
Good morning, councilmen. My name is Jeff Jackson, and I am one of the coaches of Alabama Heat Track Team. These fine athletes have done an outstanding job. God has blessed us. Everywhere they go, they represent Birmingham. They do it very, very well, and they win. That's very important. I thank you for the opportunity, Coach Smitherman. I just want, these guys, they practice hard. We travel all over country. We start our season, our first meet this season, actually, is Saturday in Georgia. I just want you to see who they are and say thank you to them.
Well, certainly with all that hardware you guys are wearing, Georgia's going to know you're coming. So any councilors have any comments or? Councilor Tate?
I just want to congratulate you young scholars on your performance this weekend coming in Georgia. And Coach, if you have information about your track club, could you share with us?
We practice Monday, Wednesday, Saturday, and Sunday at Shades Valley High School. And during the summertime, we'll practice at Parker High School and Shades Valley. You can reach me at 205-438-9393. We have an Instagram page called Alabama Heat Track Club, and we also have a Facebook page.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Councilor Abbott?
Before y'all get away, first, I want to congratulate you. And I want to thank you for getting up early on your spring break to come be with us, because I know that that was probably a hard thing to do. But I think it's so exciting that y'all are all so young. I mean, four of you are kind of old. But you're all so young, and you do all this running, and you win. And I just think that's exciting. So thank you for coming to see us this morning. And thank you, Councilor Smitherman and the coach, because this, you know, it cheers me up on a rainy day to see a bunch of winners come to see us.
I would be remiss. One person in this group, they're all winners, they're all champions. But right now, we have one guy who is the best in this country of his age group. He went to New Balance a couple weeks ago and won the 60 and the 400. He went to AAU and won the 60, 200, and 400. He's number one ranked in the United States, and that's Gideon Newton. Counselor, I wanted to also congratulate them, but also invite them to come back. Make sure you come back and put the Alabama State Games on your calendar. Come back to Birmingham and take home some more hardware. And then also, if there's any parents out there, just wave your hand or stand up. Let us know who you're representing. And so I know it takes a lot to get them everywhere they need to be. So thank y'all as well.
Yes, and I apologize, parents. I want to thank you for all that you have done, because I know without my parents investing me playing golf in the summertime, I wouldn't be able to have a collegiate scholarship. So I want you to know it does matter a lot. So I want to say thank you as well. And Mr. President, I know they're kind of small, but if it's okay if they can take a picture with us, maybe in the front?
Sure.
They better come up here. Yeah, if they're down there, we won't be able to see them. They're too little. You want us to?
Okay. At this time, I'll read our. Mr. Clerk, could you read through our consent agenda, please?
Yes, sir. Consent agenda starts on page two. Actually, with item four, there's a request to withdraw items one, two, and three, to we can get more information on the insurance. So we have item four on consent. Page nine, we have item five. Page 10, item six. Page 11, item seven. Page 16, item eight. Page 17, item nine. Page 18, item 10 is on consent. Page 25, item 11 is on consent. Page 26, item 12 is on consent. Page 28, I'm sorry, yeah. Item 13 is on consent. Page 30, items 16, 17, and 18 are on consent. Page 31, items 19 and 20 are on consent. There's a request to withdraw item 21. Page 32, items 22 and 23 are on consent. Page 33, we have items 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29 on consent. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Okay. Will you get some feedback on why numbers one, two, and three are being withdrawn?
We were advised by the city attorney's office, Attorney Bernard, that we need to get correspondence back from the actual applicants, making sure that their insurance is not status is delinquent at the moment. So we did send out registered cards, but we have not received any back. So we'll try that again, make sure we get correspondence from them.
Councilor Abbott?
Excuse me. I would like to add items 14 and 15 to consent. They're on page 29. And item 24 to consent, which is on page 32. And then I had a question about item 25 on page 33. The question is, excuse me. Buster Miles Ford sells Chevrolets? I didn't know dealerships for one car company could sell the cars of another manufacturer. So does Buster Miles Ford really sell Chevrolets?
We'll get Cedric Roberts to speak to it. We won't profess to be the equipment management expert. So we'll find out exactly what that is, Madam Abbott.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious. I've never heard of a dealership selling the other guy's cars.
I'm more startled we're buying Blazers.
Councilor Abbott, you caught that you want to put items 14 and 15 on consent.
And then item 24 was the other one. It's on page 32.
Item 24, all right.
And that's all. Thank you.
Mr. President, item 14 is requested to be withdrawn.
14 being requested to be withdrawn.
The consent 15 as well, thank you.
Yes, that's correct. I would like, Councilor Smitherman? Well, I was going to say I have a question about item 21. Oh, that one's being withdrawn, okay. And then I would like to take item 23 off consent.
Withdraw. 23. 23.
Anyone else? Councilor Smitherman?
And this is just for informational purposes, only item 20.
Item 20. So we're taking that one off consent, okay? All right. I believe that's it. At this time, I'll read the statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing, in this case, that's items 1 through 13 on the agenda today, may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read, and all public hearings will be announced. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda? All right. I believe we're ready for the vote.
Okay, so we decided 25, do we get the information for 25, the Ford and Chevrolet?
25 can stay on. I got the information. Buster Miles Ford sells Fords and Chevrolets.
Okay.
Needs to fix his name.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right. The consent agenda passes. First item, please.
It looks like item 20. Consent, do we take? Okay, item 20 is on page 21. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a subrecipient agreement for Jefferson County Family Resource Incorporated. The city is the recipient of the grant award from the U.S. Department of Justice. U.S. Department of Justice Programs Bureau of Justice Assistance for the FY '23 Office of Justice Programs Community-Based Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative Grant in the amount of $1,998,001. And $1, I'm sorry, for a term of three years under the subrecipient agreement, JCFRC. She'll expand the Restore Program reentry services to youth ages 16 to 19 and develop and implement plans to increase Restore Program services to include the youth ages 11 to 15. Objective is to reduce criminal activity involving young people residing in the city through proactive, strength-based trauma, informed mental health services, and developmentally appropriate case management services geared to help build participants' potential for success. The subrecipient agreement is for the term of 30 months, and the city should allocate grant funds to JCFRC in an amount in ITC of $1,135,282.20. Motion, please.
That was Williams and Tate.
Item is before you.
Okay. Councilor Smitherman? Councilor Tate?
Well, I guess you could.
Go ahead.
I was just going to ask for information, but I'm sure Council Williams' question would kick it off.
Yeah, my que, well, I have a few questions on this item. One is, it appears that there's a pretty large delta in what the city's getting for this grant and what we're expending on the grant. So I wanted to know what that delta is going to be used for. According to these documents, the city receives 1.9, almost $2 million, and we're expending 1.1 million. So where's the rest of the money going?
That include resource fairs and other public community engagement activities.
Excuse me. Could you please tell us who you are and who you're representing?
Thank you, sir. I'm Carrie Buntan. I'm the executive director of the Jefferson County Family Resource Center.
Okay, and so will the city be, how are those dollars going to be expended? It's kind of weird that we are approving a grant and only a portion of it is being before us today to be expended, so?
I can only really speak to the resource center part. It is for a term of three years. The rest of it, like I said, is collaboration between other agencies that might help engage the community. I'm not really sure what you're asking.
Yeah, I think the question would be, should be directed to administration. So Director Moore?
Good morning. The way this is written, it looks as if the total grant was the 1.9. This is only authorizing execution of her subrecipient portion. We would get Ms. Adrian Stitt to get you the details of the other funding and how it would be dispersed.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilor Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Carrie, and I want to thank Jill Shanee Hunt for all of the hard work that you guys have, you know, done to launch this program. And also to just uplift this portion of the violence reduction that's being done, you know, in the city of Birmingham, along with other things that have been invested in, like the Common Ground, Credible Messenger, which we'll be getting into, talking about that. And those individuals will be deployed on the streets of Birmingham. And again, thank you in the city expansion where you guys are lowering the age, because prevention is key. It's not a silver bullet to reduce violence, and I really want to lift that up. The city of Birmingham didn't get in this overnight, and we certainly not going to get out of it overnight. But I also want to challenge those who have a solution, as they often say, to come and join the ecosystem and own your lane and stay in your lane, because there's plenty of work to be done, and a lot of people need to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Tate.
Mr. President, Ms. Adrian Stitt from our Branch Division of the Finance Department is here to speak to the question.
All right, good morning. Agent Sarah Service is direct to the Branch Division. And what was your question? I was outside.
The question was, so the award is $1,998,001. And the expenditure for the Family Resource Center So the difference between those two numbers is going to what?
We have other people we're hiring, such as a project manager for the grant that will work directly with the city, some community engagement people, and there's a couple more. I don't have everybody that's allocated in the grant, but there are other partners that's going to help with this grant.
Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Stitt, I'm glad to hear that we're hiring a project manager, because I know we get a lot of grant funds, and I don't often hear that we're expanding the staff to administer those. So that just rang a little happy bell in my ear, because, you know, I know they are, a lot of them are pretty technical, and you can't just load one person like yourself up with a lot of grants to administer, so?
Yes, it's project managers. I think it's a data analyst and a couple other others that we're adding, well, we included in the grant to help administer the entire grant.
Thank you.
Councilor Smitherman?
Thank you. You guys gave us a lot of great information yesterday at Budget and Finance Meeting. I don't know if you remember most of what you told us, but if you could just tell us about it, because you're telling us about how many participants you'll be able to bring to the program, the 11 to 14. I think one of the committee members asked, was it Madam Protem, if you use different techniques for kids ages 11, 14 versus 15 through 19, and different information like that.
Yes, ma'am. So the expansion, the pilot program that we started was for children ages 16 to 19. And those youth, we are able to put in non-traditional educational programs, including GEDs, high school equivalency, credit recovery, those sort of things. The 11 to 15-year-olds are a little trickier, because we are still having to navigate school systems. There's a lot of systems intervention. So we work with DHR, we work with the school systems, especially around mental health diagnoses, IEPs, 504 plans, helping parents navigate that part of making sure that their kids are accommodated correctly. So what this also helps us do is get a really good feel for the mental health element. Last year, we were able to serve, well, I say last year, we just turned one-year-old on March 1st. Last year, we were able to serve, well, I say last year, we just turned one year old on March first. So, um, we were able to serve through our workshops over seven hundred youth. Uh, we promised to serve a hundred and twenty with full case management, we hit a hundred and forty-one, so there is very clearly a need. Um, I can say that once we started working on this grant, we opened up the workshops to younger individuals, and probably about twenty to twenty-five percent of our, um, participants in workshops are in this age range. So, it has been an honor and a pleasure to work with them, they are certainly, they'll keep you on your toes. We did just complete on Friday our eleven to fifteen-year-old needs assessments with twenty-one kids from seven of the housing communities in partnership with HABD and BPD, and we were able to get some pretty great, um, information for them too, so.
Protem Alexander?
Yes, thank you so much, and thank you, Council Smithman, for asking that, uh, we share that information, that very wonderful information that you gave us yesterday. I'm just excited to see the expansion of the program, that you utilize the information that you gained through the pilot, and you've in- increased the number of students at that middle school age. We know how important and informative that age can be for our youth, and so I'm excited that you're gonna be working across lines with, um, different school systems, different agencies, to be sure that we give them the help they need. And, um, I agree with Counselor Tate in that, um, this toolbox, I'm just glad to see that we're expanding it, and it takes all sorts of components of it to try to help us with the problems that we're seeing, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council Smithman?
Sorry, um, but, uh, I, I did mention yesterday, sort of what, um, Madam Protem was saying, I remember, uh, being in middle school where you saw a lot of the boys, they were bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, and they were just very innocent, and then I saw, as we got to the end of middle school, the ones that were influenced by their older brothers and cousins, and those were usually the ones in high school and college that really, um, got into drugs and got into criminal activity, so I think this is a very pivotal moment, and girls too, honestly, but it's a pivotal moment in a child's life, um, so I really want to thank you for that, I know we're gonna see a big difference, um, in our youth. I know all nine of us are passionate about it, uh, and as Counselate always says, there's, we have to have a holistic approach in views of crime, it's not just, oh, policing and dealing with crime, because the police are only there to react. We have to do, um, prevention and intervention as well, so thank you for what you do, and Counselate, thank you for all that you do as well, because you were the one who really kick-started that, you, Counsel Woods, and then Counsel Williams with the police, so I want to say all three of y'all. I love me, but, okay, I appreciate y'all, but thank you for that, so thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. I believe we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, that item passes, next item please.
Next should be, um, item twenty-three. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary for the city to make application, receiving the spin grant funding from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for its climate pollution reduction grant program in the amount of ten million dollars to convert a portion of the city's rolling stock to electric vehicles and install EV chargers, develop an e-bike rebate program, and develop complete street conversion adjacent to Railroad Park, and develop a plan for the transit-oriented development, so locations with no matching funds due from the city, motion please.
Abbott and Smithman? Mr. Gambrell?
Uh, good morning, uh, my name's Tim Gambrell, I serve as the Chief Planner for the city of Birmingham. Um, this item is an item that deals with a climate pollution reduction grant that the city received from EPA, uh, in the past, and so, um, that grant will, uh, the city will be responsible to develop a, um, climate action plan for the entire MSA. Um, and also as part of that grant, they developed a program called the Priority Climate Action Plan, where the city, uh, recently submitted that document to EPA on March thirty-first. Uh, that document was focused on transportation and identified, uh, ten greenhouse gas reduction strategies that the city could employ, or actually the entire MSA could employ, and the city has chosen, uh, to submit an implementation grant of those priority actions, um, as described in the document submitted today. We will focus on, um, developing, uh, or purchasing, converting a portion of our rolling stock to EVs, electric vehicles. Uh, we'll also purchase chargers for those electric vehicles. Um, we will, uh, intend to, um, develop an e-bike rebate program where, um, it would be a scalable program, so those with lower incomes would have more benefit from the program, we would actually purchase electric bicycles through that voucher program for individuals, uh, so that they could use bikes instead of cars. Um, thirdly, we will, um, propose to design a quick build of a, of a bicycle lane from Twenty-Fourth Street to Twentieth Street on First Avenue South along the Rotary Trail. Uh, and then that item also includes, uh, a design component, where we would design a bicycle trail that would connect the Jones Valley Trail from Twenty-First Street, Twenty-Fourth Street to Fourteenth Street in front of Railroad Park. Uh, the fourth item is, uh, money for a TOD plan, where the city would evaluate, uh, sites along, uh, principally the Birmingham Express, but also other major transit corridors to identify locations that are ready for TOD, and, and that also would develop, um, some conceptual plans for two of the priority sites. Uh, it also would, um, uh, identify locations, uh, for, um, what is known as a Dutch Mobility Hub, um, where you would be able to access other alternative means of transportation, such as bicycles, uh, maybe Uber, uh, those sorts of things, to sort of help finish last-mile trips from transit. Um, and so those are the items that are contained in the grant. Uh, the grant total is around ten million dollars, no match is required, uh, and so this is the first item where we would actually attempt to implement this greenhouse gas, or the, um, the climate pollution reduction grant. Um, so, that's what I have.
Council Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President, so are we applying for this grant, or have we received this?
No, so we, we've, the grant we received is the larger climate pollution reduction grant. That grant will, um, develop a climate action plan for the entire MSA by, uh, the fall of twenty twenty-five. Uh, EPA recognized that they needed to, they wanted to kind of prioritize, you know, getting implementation dollars into people's hands, and so that's where they developed the PCAP program, and so of that larger climate action plan, the city developed a, a priority climate action plan, only focusing on transportation, and it identified greenhouse gas reduction strategies. Those strategies that were identified are ones that we could select from as part of this implementation grant. So, the implementation grant is what we're applying for now, to actually implement, um, greenhouse gas reduction strategies that were identified in, in the PCAP.
Okay, and so if we're awarded, how will we administer it, is there a cross-functional team, or is planning leading? Um, who, who coordinates this?
Yeah, so there, there are different elements, you know, so the EV purchasing, you know, would be led by, um, you know, Public Works and Capital Projects, there would be a capital component to that, we'd actually have to install chargers, uh, forty of those, each have two pumps, um, so you'd be have eighty opportunities to charge vehicles, and those would be, you know, that would be led by Capital Projects' installation of those. Um, the, um, uh, the quick build design would primarily be led by BDOT. Um, the planning effort for TOD would primarily be led by PEP, or Planning, Engineering, and Permits. Uh, and then the e-bike portion, actually, um, be, um, we would have to hire a third-party nonprofit, um, to administer that program, and, and, and that, that would be administered by that third-party consultant.
Okay, but as far as just coordinating and keeping up with all these moving parts, i- is planning sort of a central coordinator for this?
I would say planning and grants administration, yeah.
Okay, grants administration and finance, or?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm glad I took it off consent, there's a lot to be, uh, excited about, and we know this is a grant application, so the funds are by no means ni- guaranteed, but.
Right.
This addresses a lot of issues that, um, you know, are important to the city, especially, um, converting some of our rolling stock to EVs that would, you know, save our taxpayers a lot of money over the long term, because of the decreased cost of maintenance on EVs, so, and, uh, add a lot of additional chargers, so that's very exciting. All right, I believe we're ready to vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, that item passes, thank you.
Uh, next should be item thirty. On page thirty-four. A resolution setting a public hearing April the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, to consider the adoption of proposed text amendments to the city's zoning ordinance of the city of Birmingham ordinance number fifteen dash one thirty-three, uh, revising Title One, Chapter Six, landscaping, buffering, and screening that will affect all property within corporate boundaries of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC two thousand twenty-three dash thirteen. Motion please.
Abbott and Smithman?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, that item passes, and then we have one addendum item.
UC, before then?
Yes.
Okay, uh, you want me to, uh, try, uh, for that, uh, Counselor President O'Quinn, Cambridge Travel, Massachusetts, May twenty-ninth through June the first, uh, need a motion for UC, please. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, motion on the item, please. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right.
Thank you.
That item passes, um, all right, now we move on to our presentations, um, Counselor Woods, are you ready?
Thank you, Mr. President, I wanted to, one, uh, shout out the Banks Academy, uh, basketball team that won the championship, uh, this season. Let's get the details here, but if you remember, they came down, they were runner-up in football in the state in their division, I guess a few months ago when we were still in the about well, but they are the twenty twenty-four AS, AISA Class A State Champions, uh, so want to celebrate them, they're having a banquet today, so congratulations to everyone that went, uh, put any work into achieving that and continues to build that program. Also, just want to send out a reminder to all drivers to slow down and don't drive distracted, it's spring break, thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, these are the announcements for District Nine, Golden Mike Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at six PM, and they'll meet on Zoom, um, and the pa- the meeting ID is seven two zero eight four three two six six nine, the pass code is three seven eight nine four two six. Fountain Heights Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at the Fountain Heights Rec Center, and that meeting starts at six PM. Inner Ridge Neighborhood will meet on Thursday at five-thirty at the New Salem Baptist Church located at sixteen thirty-two Sixth Street North, and they also meet on Zoom as well. Central Prep Neighborhood Meeting will be held on Monday, April the first at six PM, and they'll be meeting on conference call, and you can, uh, call in by dialing seven two zero seven four zero nine seven three two. The pass code is three four eight 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 zero eight. Sherman Heights Neighborhood will meet also on Monday, April the first at six PM, they also meet on conference call, you can dial in at nine five two two oh six four nine one eight, the pass code is two two three four one eight. Public Safety Meeting for today has been canceled, and the next Public Safety Meeting will be held on Tuesday, March the, I'm sorry, April the ninth at one PM. Please submit all your agenda items by Wednesday, April the third, no later than twelve noon, to patrice dot collins at birminghamal dot gov, and it's gregory dot stanley at birminghamal dot gov. Also, um, I'd like Counsel Woods, please be safe, um, this spring break, and parents, I do highly recommend that you do pay attention to what your kids are doing, um, who know who they're hanging with, their social media, just keep a close eye, and the mayor said it, it is still a curfew, thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, Crestline Neighborhood will be meeting this Thursday, March the twenty-eighth, at the regular spot at Oak Church at six o'clock, and that is all that I have.
All right, thank you, Protem Alexander?
Yes, thank you very much, these are announcements for District Seven. The Industrial Center Neighborhood Association will meet Thursday, March twenty-eighth at six PM, the Mirador Center. On Monday, April first, the Grisella Heights Neighborhood Association will meet at three PM, also at the Mirador Center. Um, as we come to a close for the month of March, I just wanted to thank the ladies that I serve with here on the city council as we bring to close the end of Women's History Month. I've been enjoying the series of rapid-fire questions that, um, each of us have had an opportunity to answer, learn some things about some ladies, so. Somebody cut her hair and said she'll never cut it again, so, uh, I love it. But thank you PIO for giving us the opportunity to just share a little bit about ourselves, and, um, congrats to all the women who've been honored this month, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Smithman?
Thank you, um, Mr. President, I don't have any announcements, no neighborhood meetings, just Happy Easter, Reservation Sunday, and please, everybody be safe, thank you.
All right, Counselor Abbott?
There, um, the next planning and zoning meeting, which was scheduled for March twenty-seventh, is no longer scheduled for March twenty-seventh, because we have no cases. So, um, that's a little happy thing for your spring break, is no meeting. Um, Neighborhood Associations, uh, tonight, the Redmont Park Neighborhood Meeting is canceled, and next Monday, Glen Iris Neighborhood will meet at Saint Elias Maranite Catholic Church, as usual, at six thirty PM. Y'all know I'm a big proponent of my Beham three one one app, I think it's the, one of the greatest things the city's done, and I love it, because you can attach photos, so I encourage all residents, rather than calling our offices to tell us about things, put the app on your phone and you can send pictures of the things that you're complaining about, which I believe is more effective. And we're asking all residents of District Three to please continue to visit our website for all the additional information that we don't have time to tell you during our three minutes here, and that's www.bhamdistrictthree.com. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President, District Eight announcements, uh, neighborhood meetings, the Bush Hills Neighborhood will meet today at six thirty PM in the Bush Hills Connection Complex, that's the former Woodrow Wilson School, uh, in the community room, and that is, the entrance to that is off the alley, the address is ten thirty, Fourth Terrace West, and this is an in-person-only meeting. Also, the Five Points West Community will have their meeting this Thursday at six PM in the community room in the West Precinct. All are welcome to come early for a walk and talk with Ms. Latonya Spencer of RPG, the facilitator of the Family Fund Center at, planned for Five Points West. Uh, they'll be meeting on the site, uh, on the building site in the Crossplex Village at four thirty. Also, on Monday, April first, the College Hills Neighborhood will be meeting at six PM at Legion Field, and also the Central Prep Neighborhood will meet, uh, next Monday at the House Sanford Park, uh, or Rec Center at six PM. In honor of Women's History Week, uh, month, sorry, please join the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute in partnership with the Birmingham Chapter of the National Hookup of Black Women this Thursday at five thirty, um, to sort of close out the month with an event called the Women Gather. Enjoy a night of poetry, song, dance, and an opportunity to buy from women-owned businesses. Featured participants include our municipal poet laureate Salam Green, as well as author and poet Sanovia Muhammad and others. Also, if you're looking for something fun to do during spring break, you can join the Birmingham Museum of Art this Saturday at noon for their first installment of Disney movie masterpieces featuring the timeless tale of Beauty and the Beast. This enchanting event combines a screening of this beloved Disney classic with a unique art-making experience. In addition to watching the enchanted story, um, your reservation will. In addition to watching the enchanted story, your reservation will include specialized art kits to enable children to create their own masterpieces inspired by the film's themes of beauty, bravery, and transformation. Come experience a blend of cinematic magic and creative exploration, ideal for young Disney fans and budding artists. If you're looking for a fun way to meet your neighbors and get fit, you can join us every Thursday, weather permitting, for a walk around the Crossplex. We meet at Starbucks and start promptly at eight. And finally, happy holidays for those observing Easter, Passover, or continuing to observe Ramadan or other things. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. For District Five, the Fountain House, Fountain Heights Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six PM at the Fountain Heights Recreation Center. Crestwood North Neighborhood Association will also meet tonight at six-thirty PM at Girls Incorporated. The annual Crestwood Easter Egg Hunt will take place this Saturday, March thirtieth, at ten AM, also at Girls, Inc., which is located at fifty-one thirty Eighth Court South. East Lake United Methodist Church will also be hosting an Easter Egg Hunt this Saturday, March thirtieth at ten AM at the East Lake United Methodist Church located at seventy-seven-fifty-three First Avenue South. The next Transportation and Infrastructure Committee meeting will take place on Monday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, at two PM. If you have a submission, please contact Kimberly Phillips at kimberly.philips@birminghamal.gov. And as we move forward to April, in celebration of Earth Month, we are asking folks in the community to please partner with our office to host cleanups. If your neighborhood would like to host a cleanup, please contact the District Five office at two oh five two five four two six seven nine. This time, I want to recognize our officers on duty. We have with us this morning Cedric Pinkard, who's based here in City Hall, Ian Jackson, Jackson from West Precinct, and Jamar Green, also from West Precinct. Thank you, gentlemen, for being with us. Ms. Clark, at this time, will recognize our public speakers.
Elizabeth, gee.
As you approach the mic, please announce your name and address, and note that you'll have three minutes. I'm not sure if our monitors are working, but if they are, your time will be on those monitors.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Shaheed. I am a Birmingham resident. I also work at UAB. I volunteer in the city of Birmingham. I am a Christian Palestinian, and I'm a member of the church that brings the Middle Eastern food festivals to Birmingham for the last forty years. I spoke with you guys about three weeks ago before the work trip you guys went on, and I spoke about the email that was sent to you all about the ceasefire, to consider a ceasefire resolution in Gaza. At this point, I think you guys have all received a physical copy of the email and the draft resolution for you guys to consider, left on your desks. So, I just hope that you guys could review that and consider it. My, my family has come to Birmingham from Palestine in the nineteen-sixties, where they started and supported many businesses since then. They watched in horror as they saw major battles of the civil rights movement. They were even discriminated against as well. So, my community is all suffering right now. We wake up every morning to news about new numbers of lives that have been lost, and new stories of destruction and violence. We're all struggling with it, and I think that this would be a great way for Birmingham to continue its legacy in considering a ceasefire resolution. At this point, thirty-two thousand lives have been lost, just in the last six months, which is a lot, at a larger rate than any other conflict in the twenty-first century. So, I hope you guys find some time to consider that resolution, and to review it and bring it to the table for discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Booth, I think she was next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Dalal Abud, and I am also a Lebanese and Palestinian-American and Christian, who also lives and resides in Birmingham. I actually have my entire life. I am also here today to encourage you all to please consider the draft, the ceasefire resolution draft that you all have. And I am here on behalf of the Palestinian Christians of Alabama Organization. As a mom and a mental health clinician, and especially as a Christian, I am urging you all to please consider the resolution. We have a large community in Birmingham who are struggling pretty profoundly and would greatly consider the consideration. Thank you so much.
Okay. For the, just for the council, I've scheduled a virtual meeting to speak with these individuals this afternoon at four o'clock via WebEx. So, if you have an interest and would like to join, please let me know, and we'll get you the link to be able to do that. Next speaker, please.
Seth Turner. Seth Turner.
All right. Doesn't appear that Ms. Turner is here, so.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
This past week, we didn't have a council meeting because several of us were in Washington, DC for the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference.
Please take your seats. Now, the program is about to begin.
We got the opportunity to not only, you know, serve NLC and learn lots of things as part of that conference.
Good to see you this morning.
Good morning.
Mayors and council members from all over the country, but we also got an opportunity to sit down in the offices of our congressional representatives. Birmingham's competing for many, many millions of dollars in federal support for various initiatives, and those types of meetings in those offices. You know, I think we can pretty much assuredly say that we secured some funding by setting up those meetings.
While I was here, there was an announcement that we, the city of Birmingham, has received a grant for fourteen-point-five million dollars to convert Fourth Avenue North from a one-way to a two-way street. So, that was great to hear while we were here in DC and be able to thank our congresspersons for supporting that application.